Call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you'd now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Rule call, please.
Granquist, Arms.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Uren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Hildebrandt.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Then a motion to approve the full agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Alright, that takes us to item number 29 on the council agenda under Public Hearings and Related Action. We'll open this public hearing to consider a Class 1K Beer Wine Distilled Spirits On Sale Only Liquor License Application For The Peer Seafood LLC Doing Business As The Peer Seafood 312 West Norfolk Avenue And The Manager Application Of Jonathan Montalvo. So, this is something that we haven't done for awhile. So Brianna, do you want to explain the process?
I can introduce. This is new for us typically. In the past, we have just sent our recommendation to the Liquor Commission As a no recommendation from the local entity. We've changed that process in our code. At the request of the Liquor Commission, this is a little more in line with what other communities do, Holding a public hearing and then sending them an official recommendation, what you guys choose. So we received this application from The Peer Seafood on May 16th For their location at 312 West Norfolk Avenue. They've been operating their business there for a couple of years now, But now looking to add the liquor component. Background check was completed by the Norfolk Police Division, which is attached to the agenda packet. Following the public hearing, the next item is a resolution to make that official recommendation to the Liquor Commission, Because ultimately, this is just a recommendation from the local governing body. The Liquor Commission will decide on issuing the license. And the applicant is here if you have questions.
Very good. Good explanation. And again, we're doing this because, at the request of the Liquor Control Commission, I think we were one of only two cities doing it the way we were. And I think this simplifies the process and adds a little bit more of a local input element to it. So, just happens to be the case that The Peer's the first application that's come in under this change. But I see Jonathan and Moses are here. This is a public hearing. If you guys wish to talk about your application, You're welcome to. Or anyone else that has any comment can do so now. Okay. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close the hearing and we'll move to item number 30. We'll look for a motion to consider approval of Resolution Number 2023-26 For The Class 1K Beer Wine Distilled Spirits On Sale Only Liquor License Application For The Peer Seafood LLC Doing Business As The Peer Seafood 312 West Norfolk Avenue And The Manager Application Of Jonathan Montalvo.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of Resolution Number 2023-26.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion, council?
I've gotten to know Jonathan and Moses pretty well. They run their business with integrity and really well And a great teammate to have downtown, so obviously would approve them and congratulations.
Well, it's not done yet, councilman, but I think there's a fairly safe assumption because of, yes, Knowing that you guys have become an important part of downtown and appreciate the entrepreneurship And the time and investment that you've put into establishing a business in downtown Norfolk. And hopefully, this will only enhance your business efforts. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-26 is adopted.
Congratulations. That was fairly painless, wasn't it? Alright, that takes us to our regular agenda. Item 31 would look for a motion to consider approval To purchase an articulating front-end loader for $138,802.7 From Bobcat of Omaha through the state of Nebraska Contract Award Number 15792 For use by the Street Division.
I'll offer consideration of approval for a purchase of articulating front-end loader.
Motion and second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Will Elwell, or Ewell, Our Streets Division Director. Will.
Mayor, council. I'm thinking in the back they've put other two quotes in there. Somebody hand these out. So this is a replacement loader. We had three different quotes, all similar in size and spec out the same. There's one from John Deere, Komatsu, and Dusan. The John Deere quote come in at $202,800, which is about, which is $63,998 more than the Dusan. The Komatsu came in at $157,597, which is $18,795 more than the Dusan. We have one Dusan already, loaders that we've had really good luck with. And the others we have are Hondas. Dusan and Hyundai have merged now, so they'll still make two different loaders yet, but we just had really good luck with the Dusan. So, actually, I think the new name of this loader will be called, I think it's Devlon. Devlon, I believe, is the, when we actually get it, will be the name on the site, because that just happened here not very long ago. They're made over in South Korea. They've been around for quite some time. If it's approved, they're about 180 days out once it's ordered. It's about all they have, I guess. It's just a replacement to one that we already have.
Will, I got a couple. What are you doing with the old payloader that sends this as a replacement?
Trade in that, yeah. We felt this is the best price for that.
And the trade-in value will be applied to, back to the street department?
No, that goes towards taking off of this loader.
Okay.
So, I think it was $42,000 or $45,000, I believe. They all come in about the same for the trade value on the loader.
And then, so you have two payloaders right now? Is that right?
We have three others.
You have three, okay. So how much estimated hours of use will you have annually?
To be honest, I couldn't tell you exactly. They're used more in the winter than any time. I mean, they all get used for different things, but I, you know, that's one thing I didn't look up. They all have pushers on them for the roundabouts and stuff, but I would, I honestly couldn't answer it. I think 200 would probably be safe. It might be more. That one did get used quite a bit for filling with cold mix, which, you know, depends on how we're doing all that. But I would think somewhere around that 200.
Okay.
Kind of depends on the minute, too.
And this is on a timely replacement as far as a number of years, or is this on an hourly replacement?
This is on years, and this one, I think, we moved up maybe a year or two from last year. The loader that we're getting rid of has had some steering problems with it. Going down the road where it'll lock up on you once in awhile. They've replaced several different parts on it. We just felt, for you know, for safety, that it was time to maybe move that up. Just, whatever they're doing, just not quite doing it, so.
Okay.
So I think it got bumped up one year, maybe from last year, if I remember right.
So this is about a 10-year cycle?
Yeah, it all depends. I think some of them could probably be pushed out. Just, I don't know, auditioning if everything's working fine on them. It wouldn't be, I think, I don't think it would be nothing wrong. It'd run up to 15 years, probably, on something like that.
So, Will, this equipment purchase was put in this year's fiscal budget for streets?
It was in this, it was in the third quarter purchase for this year.
Okay. 180 days, I assume that's longer than you had anticipated?
A little bit, and I, he was going to check, he thought they might even have one where they were going to bring in to let people demo. And if that is the case, and this would get approved, and that would just get moved up, that we'd get that. So it might be sooner than that, depending on shipping.
Sure.
Was the steering the primary reason for the need to get a new one?
What's that?
Was the steering the primary reason?
That was part of it, yeah. And it was just, it was getting it within the couple of years of when it needed to be done. But the steering was the main factor of it.
Alright, any further questions?
And that's, this is the same type of, the same brand that you have now?
We have one, other one, just like this. It's been, from what I've been told, there's been pretty much a deal trouble with it.
Probably nice, too, if you work on it, similar.
Yeah. Yeah, it's nice not to have parts for four different kinds, but, and it's been reliable.
Alright, thank you, Will. Any public input or discussion on this? Okay, any further discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 32 would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5834 Amending Section 24-164 of the city code To restrict parking on the west and south sides of Ferguson Drive From the intersection of East Bluff Avenue and Ferguson Drive Going north and west around the curve, 360 feet to where Ferguson Drive meets And transitions into East Pazwalk Avenue. As a note, ordinance number 5834 passed as amended on first reading at the May 15th City Council meeting.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number 5834 Amending Section 24-164 of the city code. Second.
Motion and second. And Brianna, could you just give us a refresher on this, please?
Yeah, this is just a little bit of a cleanup because of a snafu on my part. So if you'll remember, on the May 15th council agenda, this item was on there and it was approved With an amendment to exclude parking restrictions on Madison Avenue. In speaking with the city attorney after the meeting, who wasn't present, She reminded me of this one-sentence section in code that requires an amended ordinance Be referred back to the city attorney for approval as to form prior to coming back to the city council for final approval. So it can be approved on second and third reading if you wish to tonight. It is in its final form, what's in the agenda packet.
Very good. Thanks, Brianna.
So we are not approving the second reading here?
This would be the second reading, yes.
And third, potentially?
Yeah, if you would suspend the rules, you could pass on third as well, since it's in final form at this point.
Further discussion? Any public input? Okay, hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 24-164 of the official city code To restrict parking on the west and south sides of Ferguson Drive from Bluff Avenue North And west around the curve 360 feet to where Ferguson Drive meets and transitions into Pazwalk Avenue. To provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5834 carries on second reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the third reading for ordinance number 5834. Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on third reading. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5834 carries on third reading.
Item 33, look for a motion to consider approval of an agreement with Norfolk Public Schools And Northeast Community College for team lockers and an annual maintenance fee.
I'll make a motion of consideration of approval of agreement with Norfolk Public Schools and Northeast Community College.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. For some background on this, Nate Powell, our Parks and Rec Director.
Mayor, council, thank you. Tonight, we have an agreement in front of you. This is with the Northeast Community College and Norfolk Public Schools. And we did have a little bit of discussion at the last meeting. This is to build lockers and restrooms at Tahazuka. This is an investment by both schools into their students. This will include locker rooms and restrooms, ADA sidewalk, and access to the facility. Repurposing the old restrooms and the press box. And the old restrooms are at the press box right now, if you're not familiar with that area. The investment would be one-third of the city investment of $400,000, And I'll explain where we get that money from here in a moment. One-third from Norfolk Public Schools, up to $400,000, not to exceed that amount. And one-third from Northeast, up to $400,000 and not to exceed that amount. The usage fee is also in there. This would include our regular maintenance of our facilities, of their usage for, using our facilities. And it's based on a percentage of their usage. And the amount for Norfolk Public Schools would be $50,004. Northeast would be $47,994 annually, based on their usage. They would also have the turf replacement that will continue at $12,500 for each school. For the city portion, $698,000 will come from the Kohler donation. We've talked with the Kohler family representatives, and they are supportive of this project. This would be the Mallon Kohler donation. And it would be in addition to the items I mentioned with the schools. Would include a locker room with a retractable wall for batting cages and youth programs. Backstop replacement, fencing, landscaping, dedicated fast pitch field on field number two. If there is funds allowed, we will replace the playground, or we'll find a grant for that. And then, at the conclusion of that, we would provide naming rights as the Kohler Softball Complex. And we also, in addition to those funds, we have $135,000 budgeted for restrooms at Tahoe. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Well Nate, I think at the last meeting, or previous meetings, we've heard already some about this collaboration. I think it's demonstrated great partnership between community institutions To make some much-needed improvements at this facility. So, thank you for your role in helping shepherd the process and getting us to where we are. Any discussion, council? Any public input?
Nate, on the annual maintenance, what does that look like? On there, it says for the annual maintenance fee also. What's that?
That's, that's an additional 50,000, almost 50,000 for NACC and 50 for Norfolk Public Schools. Our ongoing maintenance costs. To maintain our facilities out there, The city spends $950,000 in maintenance costs to maintain Tahoe And the memorial fields as well. And their percentages, their percentage is based on that. I didn't write down the percentage next to it, But it's roughly 10% of that amount. Or, I'm sorry.
So they'll be contributing to that?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any input?
Just a question or two. The, the usage fee, You came up with 50% of what the cost of providing those facilities are to those entities. I'm just wondering how you arrived at the 50%?
I'll speak in terms of both schools at the same time. The schools use our facilities 20% of the time. And so 20% of roughly a million dollars, we're just using even numbers here, would be 200,000. And so, we're asking for 50% of that amount, which is significantly more than what they pay now. Where they currently don't pay anything outside of their $12,500.
My question would be, why 50%? Why not 60%, 75%, 100%? I mean, what was the magic to the 50%?
Just me personally, I mean, in my experience, 50% cost recovery is a win for Parks and Recreation. That's just, that's a, it's just a win. I mean, I can't say anything. I mean, it's good for the city. You can always, you know, ask for more. We did talk other numbers, but that's what we came to clues on.
I would dare to say, Nate, that that number's higher than in previous agreements, Similar agreements that we've had for maintenance on other city facilities.
Historically, we've been at 0% for, I don't know how long.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
How long are we tied in at 50% Nate?
And I believe getting some cost recovery is a win. I was just curious on where that 50% came from and how that was arrived. The one other question I had regarding this whole collaboration, and I agree with the collaboration, I think it was a great thing. I think it's great to pull these other entities together, make everybody pay their fair share. The only question I had was, these agreements were floated to Norfolk Public Schools and to the college Long before there was ever a public meeting from the city to state that this was where we were going. So, it, those entities knew that there was an agreement in place. I would assume you all, as council, were on board with that before those agreements were floated to those other entities. Otherwise, that would be very embarrassing if you guys would vote against that, That those agreements without having some buy-in in advance. So, I just found the process a little bit odd that there wouldn't have been a meeting already that you talk about this. So, I assume that you guys all knew about this agreement and all these agreements that were floated out there Before they were ever even put on a council agenda.
It appears Nate would like to talk to the process.
In 1980, we got rid of the Parks and Recreation Board. That's where you have these conversations publicly Long before it comes to council. You get to hear from the public and you get to hear these things. And council had already approved that. We are starting our first Parks and Rec Board meeting on July 22nd. That'll eliminate the problem.
Nate, there were subcommittee council meetings on this topic?
Yeah, we did have, we did have some committee meetings on the topic.
Okay.
Thanks. I just think in transparency, that when these agreements are floated out there and everybody knows about it Except for, it hasn't been talked at a city council meeting. It should be at least brought forth at a city council meeting before it's, The agreements are floated out to the other entities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Mr. Mayor, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Arms, Webb, McCarthy, Uren, Snorton, Lawson, abstaining from the vote, Hildebrandt, Absen, Granquist, motion carries.
Item 34 would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number 1F With Alcorn Paving Construction Company Incorporated For Paving District Number 520 Walters East Knolls 14th Edition Project Resulting In A Net Increase Of $6,582.60.
Second.
Alright, motion and second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director. I'm sorry, Anna Allen, our Assistant City Engineer. Welcome, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess we should discuss beforehand who's going to talk about it. This is in consideration for the change order, the final change order for, final payment for the paving district On Walters East Knolls 14th Edition, which is just off of Benjamin Avenue. Part of their new development up there, or extension of their development. So this was the paving district that, for putting in the concrete pavements and sidewalks For the 13 lots that they are working on developing currently. So this change order right now, in the amount of $6,582.60, Incorporates extra material for construction for subgrade, or sorry, for the crushed concrete foundation. And some rebar over the storm drain and flared-in sections for the storm drain Going parallel with Benjamin Avenue. This will result in a final contract amount of $255,849.95. And this cost will be assessed to the owners in that's adjacent to the paving district. Can you answer any questions if you have any?
Thank you, Anna. Any questions? Pretty straightforward. Thank you, Anna. Any public comment? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 35, look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5835 To amend city code Section 24-272 To include additional streets upon which golf car vehicles can be operated. To amend city code Section 24-373 To remove the requirement that golf cars be equipped with roll bars. And to amend city code Section 24-377 To increase the minimum damage amount to report accidents to $1,500 to match state statute.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 5835 To amend city code Sections 24-272, 373, and 377.
Motion and second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Chief Don Miller of the Norfolk Police Division. Welcome, Chief.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I will call this our cleanup bill, our cleanup ordinance. In March 20th, 2023, city council meeting, you passed the ordinance for golf carts on city streets. And as we were putting that together, it was something new for us. We tried to anticipate all of the situations that could arise. And after we passed the ordinance, I went to do some training with my officers on the process. And I give them credit for identifying a couple of issues that should be addressed, and that's what this is the result of. The three things are, the first one being the streets. The intent of the ordinance was to keep these neighborhood vehicles not transportation from one side of town to the other. So it was designed with 25 mile an hour speed limit to cover those streets. Residential streets are generally 25 miles an hour. What I didn't think about is the one-way streets of Third to Sixth Street From Omaha Avenue to Madison Avenue. Is a pretty significant-sized residential area that would have been excluded from this ordinance if we would have left it as-is. That wasn't the intent, so we looked at also, do we raise the speed to 30 miles an hour for the golf carts? The problem with that is that would include other streets we designated, we didn't want them on. For example, Pazwalk, Georgia, Prospect. And so, the compromise we came up with is to include those residential one-way streets only So that it fits the residential intent of the ordinance. So that's what that piece is. The second one is the roll bar discussion. We got that from another community that was doing golf carts. It sounded like a good idea. After it was passed, we quickly found out that the, A true roll bar is not designed on pretty much all golf carts that we could find. There's probably a manufacturer out there, but I'm not sure what that would be. Generally, they don't have them. Anything that does have a true roll bar is not a golf cart vehicle. It is a low-speed vehicle. And a low-speed vehicle can't be licensed under the golf cart ordinance. It has to be licensed as a low-speed vehicle. It's a separate process. So despite our intentions, I'm sure the intent was not to eliminate almost all golf carts. That was not why we were here. So I was, I'm proposing to pull the roll bar requirement out of the ordinance. And then the third piece is just to meet state statute. We put $1,000 in there. State statute is $1,500. So that's just a matter of matching state statute for the accident reporting. We did go to subcommittee with this and had some discussions about it, so that's why we're coming here. Because of the differences, we have not licensed golf carts yet. Because the ordinance says one thing, and we didn't- thing and we didn't, couldn't license them without a roll bar until, if it was approved. So we're temporarily, temporarily on hold. If you see fit, I'd request a pass, if you pass it, I request it goes on all three readings so that we can start licensing the golf cars. We have a waiting list of what, three or four people who are, who are wanting to license them and waiting for a phone call from us that we're ready to go. So if you have any questions on that.
Chief, I do have a question on that. So you're, you're matching the state statute for reporting accidents of $1,500 or more. What does the state statute talk about with roll bars?
There's, there's no conversation with roll bars.
There isn't?
No. No, there's not. That was something that we saw seemed like a good idea at the time. Then we realized the manufacturers are not producing golf cars with roll bars. So yeah, that was, that was something we added. It was not addressed in state statute.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. That was a good explanation of the process, and I appreciate you're, in this instance, adjusting and adapting to a brand-new ordinance that we all had to do some good study on, but now to make it usable and accessible for people, but still safe and reasonable. I think that accomplishes this, the challenge, so. Any discussion on this, public comment? Any further council discussion? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 24-372 of the official city code to include additional streets upon which the operation of golf cart vehicles is allowed, to amend section 24-373 to remove the requirement that a golf cart vehicle be equipped with a roll bar, to amend section 24-377 to increase the minimum damage amount that requires giving notice as provided by Nebraska revised statute 60-6699, to provide that when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5835 carries on first reading.
Seeing no objection, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
Motion and second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5835 carries on second and third.
Item 36, we look for motion to consider ordinance number 5836, amending section 26-97 of the city code to adjust values that will apply in the formula used when determining the surcharge for each property discharging industrial waste or other high-strength wastewater.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5836, amending section 26-97 of the city code.
Second that.
Motion and second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Rob Huntley, Wastewater Director. Welcome, Rob.
Morning, good afternoon. Mayor and Council, back in October, we did a fee schedule update by ordinance number 5805 on October 3rd of 2022. Changes were made to the values that applied to a formula contained in section 26-97 of the code, which is used to determine the surcharge for each property discharging industrial waste or other high-strength waste. Since the values contained in section 26-97 do not concur, currently reflect the changes that were made in the fee schedule on October 3rd, 2022, this ordinance amends section 26-97 as a housekeeping measure to keep consistency in the code.
Thank you, Rob. So the changes have already been made, we're matching it up in another section of code?
So just kind of reviewing some code, found that that was a, it's a big formula, and we found that there was a little piece that needed to adjust.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Rob. Any public input? Okay, hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 26-97 of the official city code to adjust values that will apply in the formula used when determining the surcharge for each property discharging industrial waste or other high-strength wastewater, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5836 carries on first reading.
Seeing no objection, I make a motion to suspend the rules of second and third reading.
Second.
Right, motion and second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5836 carries on second and third.
Item 37, we look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023-27 approving the preliminary planned development on property generally located northwest corner of East Norfolk Avenue and North Victory Road at the request of Norfolk Rentals LLC. Do I hear a motion?
I'll have a consideration of resolution 23, 2023-27.
Sorry.
Motion and second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you. I'll put up a couple displays here just to kind of get people where you know you're at. This is the highlighted piece of property that we're talking about. It's approximately about 1.6 acres northwest corner of Victory Road, Norfolk Avenue, sorry, and Victory Road, Highway 35. Over here is Sparklight, just to give you a little, where are you at? Let me go to the, this is the zoning map, and so it would be this piece of property right here that is the preliminary plan development tonight. It is currently R1 zoned, so if the preliminary PD goes through tonight, then the zone changed R3 would take place at the same time as the final plan development. And you can see that there's R3 about 100 feet down the road, and there's other R3 and multifamily kind of in that general vicinity also. And also the comprehensive plan, it actually calls for commercial, which would be this piece right here. And so the residential multifamily use is actually a less intense district that they're requesting than what is actually contemplated in the comprehensive plan. So the preliminary plan development, I will bring that up so you can see what it looks like. It will be a three building of eightplex apartments. They're one-bedroom apartments to assist with adding new affordable housing stock to the community. The PD is requesting the allowance of multiple buildings on one lot. A five-foot setback release for the southeast corner right here, you can see that it just goes into the 25-foot front yard setback by that five feet. And then also a 625-square-foot dwelling unit instead of the minimum 650 for the first floor square footage that is in code. So that is why there's a plan development in place to ask for these variances. And I said, if the preliminary PD passes tonight, then the zone change request for the R3 will come back. And so it would actually be a public hearing for the zone change at Planning Commission and City Council, and then the final plan development is a, is a public hearing at City Council also. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you, Val. Going back to the comprehensive plan, so that did call for that area generally to be commercial, is that, in your opinion, is that because of its location, because of the, being at the intersection there of two major corridors?
Yes, and there's other commercial, as I said, there's Sparklight across the way, there's a large church, and so yes, being at the intersection like that of collector's arterials, we would recommend, just as general planning, that it be either commercial or if there is residential, it be multifamily to buffer the, the single family behind that.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Val?
Yeah, Val, I do have a question. So with, you have what, 24, three buildings, eight piece, 24 units?
Correct.
So the amount of concrete there, would they be required to have any kind of retention bond or anything for runoff?
That would be a question for Steve. I believe they're working on that, yeah.
Yeah, to the extent they exceed the one acres, we would look to have some sort of detention, retention on site to mitigate stormwater runoff. I'd look to that southwest corner or something like that.
Steve, another question for you, because I received some correspondence, I think council did too, from those in the neighborhood expressing some concern about wastewater and sewage capacity in, in the area. Can you address that?
Yeah, for this type of a development, residential development, there's ample capacity in the system over there. Something like this would generate, if you just kind of try and throw it all together and say half of the flow off of this occurs within a 60, 60-minute timeframe, you're looking at about 18 gallons per minute max. The system, I've got some numbers here in front of me, but I believe we're normally running, and Chad's here, he might need to help me. I think currently we're seeing 300 to 400 gallons a minute with an occasional peak at about 525 gallons per minute. We upgraded the pumps at that system in 2016 to 1,200 gallons per minute, so the 18 would push you to about 540 gallons per minute. As part of the system expansion over there, you know, we would look to expand that system to what the, what we call kind of a phase-two improvement when, when the daily averages or peaks start to hit 75% of that 1,200 gallons per minute. So compared to say, you know, I know Val talked here a little about it, about commercial, if there was going to be a commercial car wash or something going in here, you know, that would certainly generate more of a red flag in terms of our capacities and any kind of improvement. This is about as mild of a improvement as it would get without just being one or two residential units.
Okay. Yes, Steve. Any other comments or council discussion?
Where was the stormwater being discharged to? You said the southwest corner?
That area, yeah, there is a, there is a, you know, it's got the road right there, and so the road is providing a natural barrier there, but generally that flows west towards the flood control system. And so you could look at that, I think we'd, we'd want to look at somewhere down along there, but I think that southwest area, there's, there's some trees planted over in there, but I think you generate sufficient stormwater, water quality control there. Up against the levee, we are, we are close to that levee. I can't remember exactly how close we are off the top of my head, but we do, we do try to restrict excavation. If you're within 300 feet of that levee foot, we try to restrict levee excavation. Certainly, we don't want this piece of property to sit here vacant forever, and so it's a balance of looking for the right piece of, of development and capturing some stormwater, stormwater retention.
Okay, this may be a question for Val, but I think at Planning Commission, there was some discussion about screening and what would be required for an R3 development like this. Can you talk, Val, does, does this fall within the corridor beautification overlay district? And if not, are there specific regulations for, for R3 landscaping requirements and screening?
It does not fall into the highway corridor overlay. That was just on 275 and 81, so it does not have that overlay on it, but it would have your standard formula for trees of essentially one per 50 feet adjacent to roadway, so you would have trees along here. And then it also has screening of 20 feet, so the green space of 20 feet, and you can see that, they have that right there between R3 and R1. And then, so that's the buffer that you would need. Screening is for rears of buildings or major circulation patterns, and so that would essentially be this part of the, the parking lot. That would be your major traffic circulation. And by code, it can either be landscaping or a fence. It would be up to them, whichever they choose. And there are actually existing trees there along the west side.
Those, those trees are not owned by this property though, correct? They're owned by?
No, they are on this property. You can actually see the, the little, little circles there.
Valerie, so it doesn't meet setback requirements and it doesn't meet square footage requirements? Is that correct?
In a little area. So they are asking for a setback relief for just the one corner of this building? The southeast corner of the building right there? And then they want 25 square feet smaller apartment than the minimum 650 for first floor that we currently have in code. So not a huge relief ask.
Okay. Thank you, Val. Any other questions? Any public comment, public input on this?
I'm the one that sent you guys all the email. My name's Brittany Compton. Me as well as everyone sitting back there, we've all had super backup in our homes multiple times, so we find it hard to believe that this is all of a sudden magically fixed and that this, along with the new addition of the prime stop, the new swimming plant won't cause problems, won't, we won't have issues again. I guess if we're going to put something like this in such a small area, I just don't see how it wouldn't possibly cause more issues, or if we'd like a guarantee that we're not going to have issues again. I've been told that their system is supposed to have the capacity to do the sewer, and clearly it has not. And I also ask, I have two small kids that like to be outside all the time. This is not something that we ever would have moved next to. It's not something I want to raise my family next to, to be quite honest. I would just like to take that in consideration also, if you'd want to raise a family next to 24 low-income houses that close to your property.
Thank you, Brittany. Anyone else wishing to make comment? All right, any further discussion, council?
Val, I got a, I got a question for you. So at the Planning Commission meeting, there was some conversation that had taken place about emergency management vehicles, being able to assess this property and being able to get around, and the outcome of that was is that some, but not all, is that what I kind of understand? Some would be able to access this, but not all vehicles be able to get around the west property line?
I think I took the email to mean fire looked at it and they were okay with it.
Okay. Okay.
Val, what was the Planning Commission vote on this?
Six to zero, seven to zero, however many. It was unanimous.
It was unanimous?
Yeah.
I do have maybe just a follow-up comment, I guess, with, with our comments is, on the, the, that sewer, if we've had issues there, we were confident that what we have here is not going to cause any more issues.
So, way I would answer that is, yes. The way I want to answer that is, yes, in terms of development. So the issues we've had are, in 2010, we had a flood that, that caused a lot of INI or infiltration of stormwater into the sanitary sewer system out of Woodland Park. And there were improvements made up there and hard restrictions put in place, engineered restrictions put in place that have controlled that flow. So we're not seeing the INI out of Woodland Park anymore as a function of heavy rains. They also did a lot of lining of their, of their sanitary sewer system, which plugged up any, any sort of cracks or anything like that in the system. But, so that was INI-related, heavy INI-related. Again, in 2019, or was it 2019? I think it was, 2019, we had a storm sewer backup as a function of a, a large ice plug that developed in a storm sewer system. I don't remember exactly, I would guess it was about a hundred-foot long, solid plug of ice. And it happened to occur on a downhill section of storm sewer. And so as, as we started to get spring rains that backed up along that, again, it created a high INI or infiltration into the sanitary sewer system that then flooded out the, the lift station. So the, the development, development like this, development like Prime Stop, those are not, those are not going to flood the system. The system can handle those just fine. If there was another significant rain event or flood event, and it, it found its way into any sanitary sewer manhole or into our sanitary sewer system, it could result in a backup. But again, that has nothing to do with development or development like this, Prime Stop legacy band. The system can handle that, it's designed to handle that.
Could you repeat that last part? That a backup could happen, but not likely to happen?
A backup could happen if there is storm water that enters the sanitary sewer system.
So people that are in our audience tonight, that's reassuring to them?
I'm not, I'm not going to say that's reassuring, I'm just saying that if...
I think that's why they're here tonight.
Right, but if, if storms, if storm water, floodwaters enter our sanitary sewer system, whether it's on, Chad, just roughly, what do we have, twelve lift stations in town? Nine lift stations? It doesn't matter where you are in town. We have twelve lift stations. If, if storm water finds its way into our sanitary sewer system and floods that, that lift station, then the people closest to that may have backups.
But historically, we're talking about one lift station not working properly.
Right.
We're not talking about other eleven.
Right, but, but we've identified both causes.
There's a problem.
We've identified both causes. Woodland Park was one. We did an engineered solution up there. We have not seen any, 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 even during heavy, heavy rains, we've not seen that INI peak like that. And again, we, we identified the issue here in 2019 that caused this. We've got a very solid, solid solution in place for that, and I don't, you know, I would not expect that to happen again as a function of that. But other, other flood events, you know, if they happen to find their way into a storm sewer, they do inundate our lift stations.
Thank you, Steve, for that explanation.
So out of the, you mentioned there's twelve lift stations. We're primarily talking about one, so I guess out of the other eleven, how many of them had this historical problem over a couple decade run?
I'm going to divert that to our, our water director.
We had one other incident with a station that we no longer have in service. There was a flood, I think it was 2009, where it was flooded down by Tahoe Zuka.
Chad, can you just introduce yourself for the record, please?
Chad, Chad Roberts, water and drainage director.
Thank you.
This is that one that went down through the south part of town, took out by Woodland, or excuse me, Tahoe Zuka. We had a lift station down there, Highway eighty-one, right by Amp Ride. That one there got flooded. We had a, we had to do some backup pumping there just a little bit during that time. We also had a little bit of flooding there at Monroeb Lift Station that was over there by Heartland Concrete. So, did it cause any damage to homes or properties? That, that prob, that, that area, no, it did not, but those stations did flood due to the factual flood. So, one thing also to keep in mind with the two seventy-five station, that engineering device that we put out there at Woodland Park, this is a smaller pipe that was installed in the, in the pipe coming down from their hill. This pipe can only allow three hundred and seventy-four gallons a minute, max. And then anything that goes over that gets discharged into their basin they have on the, the east side of that. That overflow basin takes on that ex of water that comes down in a rain event. But since then, we have not seen any kind of high usage coming from there since this pipe has been installed.
And that was when, Chad? When was that system put in place?
2016.
Yeah.
Was when that was done. So, and, and we've upgraded our controls there at the station. It is now on a banner radio system, so now we get a call back on alarms and stuff at our station about every fifteen seconds. So our response time has improved also with that, with the addition of the radio system.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion, council?
Is it still open to us to talk?
Sure, if there's, yeah, if somebody wants to come forward.
My name's Dan Wilson, I live in the, across, to the south of Spark Lake. I'm one of the fortunate ones that have been flooded numerous times. I don't care what your report says. I know one time Beth called me, and this in the last two years ago, called me because the light was going off. But the city, it didn't, I don't, you can ask Chad, I don't know, but the city didn't know it. She called them, she called me, I went home. I've got a backflow preventer and a valve, well, it wouldn't hold because of the pressure. So mine's leaking, we're downstairs brooming ours into the lift, or lift pump to get it out. If she hadn't seen in her place where it had flooded, so would Mrs. Fredricks and more. And the thing you keep missing here is, there's four of us. If we all put in lift stations and separate ourselves so we can't get flooded, now you've got four or five other people up further that's going to get it. It doesn't go away if we just eliminate us, but you just keep doing it. Chad, how, how long of a time if NPTD loses their three phase over there? How long of a time is, before you can get a generator out there?
Dan, if you can, if you can direct your comments to the council, yeah, so we can hear you in the mic.
Okay.
Chad, we'll have to have you come talk into the mic, please.
We can have a generator there in about fifteen minutes.
Okay, fifteen minutes, what do you say in a minute? What say the, if something happens, normal, it's whatever, six hundred gallons a minute? Okay, so what is that, nine hundred, nine thousand gallons? Okay, nine, how big of a pipe is that? Is it twelve inch? I mean, I'm not an engineer, but that nine thousand gallons is going somewhere and it's not getting pumped across, so it's backing up.
Right, you know, you're absolutely correct. If the power goes out, you know, and you're receiving a, a high flow in that sewer system, it's not going to take very long for the system to fill up.
You just answered your own question. How many years ago was it when you guys approved it to be moved south of Omaha Avenue, but because it cost four million dollars, you decided not, didn't have a need? I guess that's what you had.
Right, so sewers are designed to take a certain amount of capacity. So right now, that, that is a very large lift station, and there is, there is insufficient capacity to operate the system. Well...
Then I guess I, I bet, everybody who's sitting here plus the other people, all you've got to do is sign off that says, if anything happens, we'll take care of it, because you've had it happening four times to me.
So this, I mean, I think the conversation's drifted from, from, from the rezoning to a conversation on, you know, is that lift, when is that lift station going to get constructed?
Yeah, I, I think we want to be careful there, too, and, and Dan can, yeah, I would be as frustrated as you are, too, with, with that history, right? But I think what Steve's trying to hear, is trying to say, and what staff's trying to say is, those things aren't necessarily related.
All right, that's fine.
Related to a new development necessarily coming in.
Okay, I get that. The other thing, back to Val's planning, she says that there's R3 close to it. Well, there's lots of R1 close to it also. That doesn't mean that we all just get thrown to the side because there happens to be an R3 there. And that drainage that you were talking about, that goes across the ditch and there's a culprit underneath, and it goes to the south side. So if you don't have retention over there, you're shoving all that one point six acres or whatever, or the water, you're going to put that over there. So now you're diverting water onto other people. And now that, you can't do that either.
And that's part, and that's part of the intention of retention, is to control that from happening.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan, yeah. Yeah, I, I do want to know, I, I know some of these conversations have been happening about the, the problems with, that, that you've just described, and that they will continue to happen in terms of finding solutions. But I want to be careful to not necessarily correlate the two, given the explanation we've gotten in terms of how a, a new development may impact the capacity there, because if I'm, if I'm interpreting it correctly, there's, it's, this isn't necessarily a cause and effect related to new developments. Accurate, Steve?
That is correct. You know, this, this development here with these eighteen units would be in that eighteen gallon per minute, twenty gallon per minute range. You know, and that's, that's putting fifty percent of the flow that would come out of those units into a one-hour period. So I'm pretty confident that's...
I guess I have, I have one question. Is, is the developer or representative of the developer here tonight?
Good question. Yep, you're welcome to come forward and, and talk about the development if you like. Good evening.
Chad Carter with Norfolk Rentals. I'm assuming there's questions for me?
I guess I just, I guess, what is an estimated rent on these, these twenty-four apartments or dwellings that you're...
Our goal is to keep them under seven hundred dollars a unit. That's what we're looking at, six twenty-five, twenty-five by twenty-five for the unit. Like I said, all one-bedroom. They'll be made quality materials, it'll be floorboard siding, you know, windows, I mean asphalt shingles, it isn't, we're not just throwing something up, but we have such a demand for affordable one-bedroom apartments that, that's the reason that we're looking at developing this. Why this location, the size of the lot, with the amount of units that we wanted to put, it was ideal. It's been vacant for, forever. I know there's been a sign in the yard for sale for at least ten years, not longer. The current owner that we were purchasing it from was originally intentionally putting a car wash in, was his thoughts when he bought it, and just never, yeah, he decided to retire, so sold his other car wash, he's been sitting on the, on the empty lot.
So one, somebody that had reached out to me that is in the, in the nearby area, what is the vetting process for, for renters? I mean, what is your, your vetting process? They're worried, lower, with the, with the, they're worried about the property guys, and the second thing they're worried about is, is who is, who are, who are you attracting in the attainable or affordable housing sector?
We have a lot of widow, I mean, we have, yeah, we have such a demand. We have apartments over on Isabel Circle, they're all ground floor. I mean, I have a waiting list for those, and they're all two-bedroom, and yeah, I mean, there's been, I've been contacted by the Liberty Center, on people from Kensington that had to go. So, I mean, we have an application process and screen them, just like any other landlord, but yeah, so that's what we're looking at.
Chad, it sounds like you have some experience in this, in this field, this area. You have other, other properties, fifty-two units that you manage?
Right.
Okay. And you've, there's other instances certainly in the community where R1 abuts up to R3. I'm in one, I have an hundred and forty-year-old house that's next to a quote-unquote low-income housing unit. And I guess the type of people are, a lot of cases elderly, and people who may, who, who just need a decent place to stay. And I think it's, it's helpful for us to be mindful of that fact in the community, that we hear a lot that we need affordable housing because that, that fits citizens' needs. So I, I think all kinds of housing forms are necessary to do that in a growing community, so. Again, this, this property you identified as one that was, has sat vacant for some time. Did you have plans for this? For, have they been in the works for a while in this particular area?
Yes, I've been working with them over the years.
Okay, okay, all right. And you've been through the pre-planning processes with staff, okay? And I think probably also important to note on this process as a preliminary plan development, this is the first of four, or maybe, I guess, the second of four or five public hearings that will be involved in the process?
Yeah, this is the second meeting of the prelim, or the plan development process, and then the zone change will have another two. So there's still four more technically processes to come, probably over the course of a planning commission and a city council meeting, two at the same time.
Okay, thank you. While you're up here, can you talk about the screening process, plans that you have in place for meeting the screening requirements in code?
We require like three times rent, like with our income.
I, I mean, the, the buffering, the landscaping and the fencing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, we are, we're planning on doing, yeah, the trees along the whole west side. And then, like you said, there's the opening, there's, there're going to be grass on the, from the, the Circle Drive, so there'll be landscaping there. And then I know on the, the south side of the property as well, that's just a buffer between Norfolk Avenue and the tenants' backyard, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Although we, you call out one, one bedroom, what's the allowable capacity for each unit?
Um, it would be two.
Just two? Two will be, two will be max on the...
Correct.
Okay, and that's thirty units, right? We have...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Correct.
Chad, I see you have, like, just looking at the plans, you have like the dining room right there, right next to the, the fridge. Why wouldn't you put a patio door there to go out to a patio for a grill?
Uh, we, we did talk about that, discussed that as well, even moving the kitchen to an L shape, sort of actually hit the bathroom, if you will, and then that would leave more of that back corner for, yes, an exterior door. Again, it comes down to cost for an extra door, for concrete, than for twenty-four units. And again, for us to try to keep these in budget to keep the rent at a level that we want to see them at, certain things have to be left out. And that, that was one that, yeah, we did, because originally, yeah, we did have that. Like I said, the, because the kitchen runs that whole back wall, and originally we had it where it was actually L-shaped, like I said, touching the bathroom and only coming halfway, and that would let, I think it was like six foot for, for a doorway to go outside, out back.
My concern is, being with R3, being with commercial, being in the middle of R1, you're, you want your development to spawn improvements in all of them. So those little, without having the garages, without having a patio to, to, I mean, to go have, to grill out with family, my concern is that this becomes in twenty years, this, this does not promote improvements in the R1 around you. This promotes R1 vacating. This looks like an old motel to me, so. I would just challenge you to get creative. I love your plan, I think we need affordable housing, I think we need the density, I'm, I'm actually all for that, but to develop it in a way that promotes investment in the R1 around you. Because right now, I don't want to live by this either. I would say add the patio door, because there's a cost there that you'll get back. That's, that's my opinion, so.
Val, can you screw up the elevations?
Val, can you scroll up to the elevations? Can you scroll up the elevation of the... A little concern for me is we've, we talked months ago about overlay districts on Norfolk Avenue and Two Seventy-Five and, or not Norfolk Avenue, but Two Seventy-Five and we've enforced these overall, overlay districts on Riverside. This is a corridor coming into town. I don't think it's a bad place for affordable housing, I'm just a little disappointed in the final picture that was presented in front of us. That is something you're gonna see coming into town. I don't know if, and I know you're on a tight budget, but that, those elevations don't, I don't really think look good as far as coming in. Now, if you could split them up and do, I know it adds more cost, you know, if you had, or even some sort of, just to dress them up a little bit, but this is pretty basic and that's, for me, a little bit tough, especially when we're forcing people in other areas to do the same thing. Another thing I've got a little bit of issue with is Councilman Granquist is not here tonight. It is his ward and everybody needs to have an opportunity to have that representation. And that's a vote, and I don't know how that, you've looked upon that vote, but that could be either a no vote or a yes vote with him not here. I think somebody within that ward is going to hear more from what people within the ward wanna have happen. And I'm, that to me is kind of a hang-up tonight, just simply because it is contested. If it was, if this wasn't contested at all, I probably would have no problem with how I would vote on it. But that is kind of an issue for me right now, so. I don't know how everybody feels about that, but that, I'm gonna put that out there.
I have spoke to most of, some neighbors there, I'll say two or three, just got their input. Nobody's really excited about it. And I don't think, like what Ms. Compton was saying, I don't think it's a bad thing to have low-income housing. I think there's a way to develop low-income housing that promotes a culture of vibrancy and it promotes reinvestment in the community. I just look at this chat and I'm just like, I can't grab on to it.
We're making affordable housing, it's not, we're not hearing the sword "low-income." It's, yeah, the lady that's eighty years old can't wanna take care of her house and needs a place to go, it's...
She'll want somewhere to park her car, Chad. She'll want somewhere to park her car in a garage, probably.
Well, Chad is right on that point. You put a garage on there, the price will get out, you won't be able to...
No, but I'm just saying that...
So, I mean, he is, he's hitting, he is hitting a niche at the price range and the square footage. So that, I'm not saying that it is, I mean, it is a good project. It's just, my problem is with our overlay, do we, and we don't have an overlay there, obviously. But I have a little bit of issue with just the exterior look on this project.
That's kind of, I'm just saying, if you don't have the garage, have the patio.
Guys, I would remind everybody here, we're up here to make a decision on a zoning designation right now and...
And that's all reason in this conversation, Josh, is like, do we think this fits the zoning? Does it promote the zones around it?
Yeah, well, I think, again, it's important to be mindful that this would not be the only case in our community where R three is adjacent to R one. I think we want and need to be open to various housing forms within the community and then, you know, some of the things within this discussion, I've heard them before, is, yeah, we're all about affordable housing, just don't want it next to me. And how, what are people in the community who need affordable housing supposed to think about that?
Chad, I don't think, I'm not arguing that, Josh.
No, yeah, I...
My point, my point is the fact that you're gonna be cut. I sat here and listened to people complain about mini storages. And, I mean, I was not all in favor of the overlay district to begin with, but we did put one in. And we're making, we've wanted to make the corridors look nice coming in our community. This, to me, is a corridor. I don't think the, I don't think this is a bad project. I think there needs to be some more work put into this to make it look presentable when you're coming to the community. That's all, I'm getting it.
And, and to be fair, and this is, again, an early step in the planned unit development process, which some of those, some of that detailed work, I think, kinda, the embellishment, if the developer's willing, has a chance to show itself when you get to the end of the process. This, this is not, this is not the end-all, say-all. It's allowing a step forward in which I think has to go back to planning commission and then ultimately back to council on an ultimate decision to go forward or not, so. I think we just want to be, again, cognizant of the fact that, for a long time, Norfolk had a housing shortage, still probably does in some ways, and that there's members of the community of all demographics that have a need for housing. And I think it's, I think we wanna be careful about the "not in my backyard" argument automatically.
I would say that I'm not, I'm not opposing to this affordable or attainable housing. I guess the thing that I'm hung up on is the, is the infrastructure able to accommodate? We have a study that says yes and we have homeowners and neighbors that say, it won't. I guess that and now we're gonna go ahead and push the drainage on to, to the south and then we're gonna push it further to the south under Norfolk Avenue. I guess there's some things that are some, some things that we frown upon, but then it's in, sitting in front of us tonight that says, yeah, in this case, it's okay. So, I guess I'm, the infrastructures, I don't know that accommodate the...
How was that, Corey, how did, I'm just asking for clarification. How did the staff, how did the staff answer, not address the capacity issue for this particular development?
Mr. Wilson was up here and he said, you're gonna drain that to the south and to the west. And there's a culvert that sits underneath Norfolk Avenue that is gonna drain it onto other people's property. And then that's where the retention pond is gonna be, or is the retention pond gonna be towards the flood control, further towards the west? But we can't dig in within three hundred feet of the flood control. So I guess I'm, I just, I'm confused on the drainage. I'm also, I don't know, I'm also confused on sewer. You know, we can say here, the study does this, but history has shown that the study does not prove, doesn't prove to hold true when catastrophic events happen. I mean, I'm okay with affordable housing, I just, I don't think the infrastructures are there to accommodate it.
Yeah, I mean, it can be the argument too. It'd be like, we say, well, the capacity's there, there could be an event that causes it to back up, sure. We can, do we wanna subject them to that event? You know, do we wanna, do we want any more liability with that sewer? You know, to back up all these apartments and all that in the event of major water runoff in the storm?
And, you know, just, and I think there's gonna be, there's, the Omaha Lift Station, when we refer to as the Omaha Lift Station, is an ongoing conversation and we address it as staff every year. We have the conversation with elected officials every year as to whether we're ready to move that project forward or not. And we're gonna be having those conversations again this year as we look at budgets. It is in our budget, it's, I can think it's four years out, maybe, maybe five years out. You know, it's fully designed, it's sitting on the shelf when it's ready to go. Part of that conversation is certainly looking for funding opportunities to help us fund that so it's not on the back of the city ratepayers and on our sanitary sewer system. Like I say, those conversations are ongoing, we have them, you know, with our elected officials, with senior staff. And there just has not been an appetite per se to move that forward based on the metrics in play at the time. You know, those can change at any time and, you know, it's, so I can't, I can't say, sitting here today, when that would happen, but it could happen, it could happen, you know, like I said, we'll have the conversation and whether or not we're ready to move that forward. In terms of working with the developer on the, on the stormwater, he and I have been touching base via phone, but once, if the zoning was to pass, then we would sit down and start working with him on how that would work. And, you know, we'd be looking at the green spaces that are on site to control it and smaller, smaller deformations on site and control it as close to the source as we can so that we don't end up with one large retention system. But it's quite doable.
So, so with the process, Steve, the drainage issue, those details will continue to be discussed. There's not necessarily a particular solution in place at this point in time, but that's why a developer goes through a preliminary unit development to work with staff to address those challenges.
Correct. Because there's a cost to that, there'll be a cost to him to get that in, you know, it's an engineered solution and there's a cost to that, so. I think he wants to make sure that he's got this first hurdle over before we go into that.
What was the property currently zoned, again?
It's still, it's R one, the comp plan calls for commercial.
So, Val, and you made the point that R three in this case would be less intensive than what commercial would be. So theoretically, if we're following the comp plan and the developer came in and wanted to do a use for, give any kind of example that would fall within commercial?
Well, like Steve said, if the person who came in and wanted to do the car wash years ago, the zone change would...
Car wash, gas station.
Yep, office building, anything like that, yep.
Yeah, which in my mind would present potentially a lot more conflict, conflict with the existing R one.
Correct, that's why the extra, it would be even more buffering and screening for something like that than residential to residential, yeah.
So, I got one more question. Is that access road, if this passes and proceeds to the next step and then is successful after the final step, is the access road gonna be paved then, or is it gonna remain gravel?
That one I'll let Steve handle, but they are not accessing the southern access road at all. So they are only coming on and back, off and back on to the already paved access road.
Yeah, and that's a combination of both private and public. So right now, the public's portion of that road is paved, the private portion of the road is unpaved. Is that, believe that? Correct, and maybe that is all, so that looks like that's all DOT, so that would still be public right of way up to that line right there. Yeah, as a, you know, again, as Val said, because his approaches are coming off the paved portion, we were not going to, you know, require that as a function of the PD, but that could certainly be part of the PD when that comes in.
So pavement doesn't run the length of the property?
The east part it does, the south part it's not.
The south part does not.
We're accessing and entering and exiting on the east side.
The approach would be on the public portion, east side.
Correct. Excuse me?
It is, it is paved.
Yes, that is.
So you're gonna pave it, you're gonna finish paving it through your property line there on the south?
No, that's what we're saying. We're only accessing, yeah.
Paved about right there.
So you don't, Chad, you don't foresee the people in your development using that road at all, the gravel?
No, there'd be no reason to.
Okay. Because a building will run that south?
They'll run east-west and then it just does a U in and out.
Okay.
So what come in from the east, go out on the east side. So no one would ever make it even to that southeast corner.
All right, any other questions?
I brought the point of Corey being gone, does that bother anybody else here?
I was gonna follow up with you on that. Do you want to table this to see if he gets back and has any further opinion since it's his ward?
Well, I think the reason I'm saying this, and Josh is right, we're strictly voting on if this is a suitable area for R three right now. We're not approving a plan to be built there. We're saying that this is a suitable area for R three, correct? With the preliminary, or, I'm sorry, preliminary plan development, yeah.
Well, it's a bit of a combination. I mean, the plan development is a zoning function. You don't actually have the zone change in front of you yet. So, what you are actually looking at is the preliminary PD and this layout and this size building and this parking. So that is what you're actually looking at tonight, is that, not necessarily the zone change.
Right.
The zone change comes later.
Right, like Steve had mentioned, we kinda went at this as, let's do the preliminary PD, see how you all feel about it before he spends more money in engineering and processes and that sort of thing. Because if it, if you turn it down tonight or the next time, then it's dead. You just won't move forward anymore.
That's why I feel like it's fair for Chad and the rest of the people out here that maybe we have a full, especially one from that ward is here tonight to make that decision. Because that's the beginning and base of the whole project. If this doesn't happen, then nothing else goes down. If it was different, if you're up here requesting just R three, it'd be a whole different story we talked about, so. Then we would just be talking about zone change altogether and not, if it's appropriate for R three to be there next to R one or commercial is better at the time. So that would be my, that's, I don't know if anybody...
On the flip side of that, nothing. I mean, if it goes forward tonight, it just simply means that Chad continues to work on it but has to still get a zoning change. If the zoning change doesn't pass, it's not ultimately moving forward, so. It's, it's up to council to make some sort of decision on whether to take this up tonight or to table it.
I'll make a motion to table this, a second.
Motion second to table, and I don't think we have any further discussion on that, right? So, please vote on the motion to table.
Voting in the affirmative, Arnz, Webb, McCarthy, Muren, Snorton, Lawson, voting in opposition, Hildebrand. Absent, Granquist, motion to table carries.
Okay, that concludes this meeting of Norfolk City Council, we are adjourned.